And a role of the appointed officers will be taken. We have, we have myself, Andrew Mitchum, we have Sherry Shepherd joining us. We have James Singleton, we have Bobby Warren, we have Greg Holden, we have Drew Lawson, we have Gary Wobenhorse. Missing anybody? All right. Anybody's presence?
That's correct.
Back in here. Okay, we're going to open for citizen comments. Anyone who desires to address the crime control and prevention district CCPD. Sorry. Board regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comments is on the agenda, the city staff and CCPD members are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments CCPD board. And Lori, you mentioned there is no one signed up to speak.
That's correct.
We will move on to item C, consider approval of the minutes of CCPD meeting held July 21st, 2020. I'm looking for a motion on that item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, please indicate by using your hand, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we will move to item D, conduct public hearing on the proposed, uh, Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District budget for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Uh, we'll go ahead and just ask, uh, Chief, if you'll just summarize the budget. Uh, we've, we've all looked over this last month, um, if there's any changes during that period between now and now.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead and do that, just want to say. Hello to everybody, Mr. President, directors, I'm going to go ahead and go over the, uh, the budget that is in your packet. Uh, uniform supplement, we're requesting $11,000 be added for two open positions. And one additional, uh, an evidence tech, we're adding an evidence tech part-time that we'll need uniforms for. The second supplement will be ammo and targets, we're transitioning from, uh, one annual, uh, qualification, which is required by T col to two. Uh, to make sure that we're proficient in that, and also we'll have open range day, uh, quarterly for officers. We also, uh, do annual firearms training for all our fire marshals. So we're adding for, uh, we're asking for $4,000 be added to that account. And the tools and equipment supplement, we're asking for taser cartridges for additional 5100. Uh, supplies used during the recruit, uh, reoccurring annual, uh, taser proficiencies be 2100. We're also asking for $13,000 to replace ballistic vests. Out of that 13,000, $8,000 will be refunded on the grant program. So we'll only be, uh, 5,000 out of our account. And then I'm also asking for the protective gear for our officers that would include, uh, helmets, ceramic plates, and a duffel bag, and that's more of the heavier, um, protection in case you do have to go into an officer fall shooting. Or if we do have something that we'd had to secure a scene, uh, to call it a attack team or something like that, we're requesting that. And that cost was $43,900. Going down to miscellaneous equipment, we're asking for a card reader. Uh, this card reader will be, uh, an additional $4,500. And as we're going for our, uh, our recognition program, as we've discussed before, this would be something that would be required. They would have to card reader for the evidence room, uh, to have that audit in case you need to pull that up. Going down to training and, uh, travel training, I'm requesting an additional $4,000 so we can start sending some of our command staff to some executive, uh, uh, training, uh, some of, from Lee Met to FBI, those type of, uh, training, I think will be very beneficial for them. So that'd be an additional $4,000 being requested on the travel training budget. Going to personnel, we're adding in one additional, uh, which will be a total of 15 officers from our, uh, that will be paying out of the crime district. And then the part-time evidence tech, what we're doing with that money is we had a part-time detective. And so we're just bringing in a part-time evidence tech, which is going to offset that cost. So there won't be any additional cost on that. Um, we also did, uh, when we, uh, went to the 12-hour shifts, we're going to have to add another 62,920 dollars to cover that additional cost that we're requesting. If you go down, uh, supplement, uh, special equipment. We're asking for, uh, on the EOC in the training room, we're going to ask for some new equipment. It's fairly old equipment, we're going to ask for $6,000 for new video, audio equipment for that, uh, for that room. Also, we're asking for an additional four flock cameras that we've discussed, that we want to strategically plant. And some of our apartment complex, we have them in the front, but not in the rear. So we're asking for that, as everyone knows, the flock program's been very successful for us. And so we're requesting that, uh, $6,000 for the, uh, audio equipment, $8,000 for the flock. Also, we're adding, uh, asking for, uh, two new Tahos that will be outfitted for our, uh, patrol division for $49,575. Um, that is the end of my present, uh, my proposal for our budget, and if I have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Okay, since this is a, a public here, the public hearing portion. Um, I'm going to go ahead and, and, uh, finish the script here, uh, there being no one desiring to speak and now close the public hearing of the City of Jersey Village, uh, crime control and prevention districts proposed annual but annual budget for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. And, uh, what we'll do is, uh, wait one second, back over. We're going to go ahead and, um, if anyone has any questions for the chief about the supplementals that he spoke about, um, now's your time to ask questions, make comments, concerns.
Uh, Chief, I've got a couple of questions, um, are these all the same items we talked about during the budget workshop?
Yes.
On, on the Tahos, those vehicles are already in the vehicle replacement program?
Yes, sir, those are already in the replacement program. And those are the ones that were, uh, scheduled to come to be, uh, two were added this year, yes, sir.
Okay, and then on, on the part-time. I'm kind of curious, you know, a lot of times we do part-time because we can eliminate a lot of the ancillary costs of health insurance and things like that. How, how do you, how, how are you implementing a part-time detective position?
They had, that's what we used to have as a part-time detective. I eliminated that position during COVID, uh, when we basically were having people, uh, non-essential personnel went ahead and let that person basically just stay at home because we didn't want him up here. And looking at the budget, and when I started looking and talking to a lot of the, uh, uh, the, the two sergeants that were actually, uh, doing the evidence. Um, it took a lot of time out of their day. And to be more proficient and to have somebody really trained to do that, which they're trained. Uh, but somebody that, that does that on a, on a, on a regular basis, I thought it'd be best just to go ahead and replace that detective with an evidence tech, and definitely as we go towards our recognition program, it'll be, it will be important to have that position. So it's just offsetting. Actually, it's less money, uh, when we look at the, the dollars, the, the hourly rate that the detective was being paid and the hourly rate that the evidence tech that will be coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the chief?
Evidence management is very, very technical, uh, Austin. The, the PD had some restrictions on part-time. But it was due to coronavirus, it wasn't that one employee that we didn't want up there. There are other departments that also had part-time restrictions, I know a lot of agencies did that.
Yeah, we didn't, um, I mean, we, we tried to keep full-time staff here as much as we can, we've limited some of the part-time people except where we needed it. But I would say it was more of a conscious effort, uh, citywide to try and control some of the budgetary unknowns.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, uh, for the chief? Okay, uh, with that, I'm going to move on to, uh, item E, consider, consider resolution number 2020 dash zero three, adopting a budget for the ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021. Uh, any discussion on this, uh, ordinance? If not, I am seeing, I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move that we approve a resolution 2020 zero zero three.
Oh, second.
I have a motion in a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, uh, opposed? Any, uh, extensions, motion carries? All right. We will move into item F, election and appointment of officers, president, vice president, and secretary for the term beginning September, busy beginning on September 1st, 2020, and will end August 31st, 2021. That's got my name on it. Um, Lori, you can help me out here if you want.
I think at this time, we would call for, uh, nominations, somebody wants to make a nomination for a slate of cat, can't, uh, candidates, or if they want to go, uh, first, the president, then the vice president.
Okay.
We typically, we typically do the slate.
Yeah, that's usually how we do almost everything, so when it comes to this, this part, uh, so looking for a slated candidates from somebody, uh, a motion and then, uh, we'll have a second after that.
I move we punish the current members and, uh, renew the slate.
Right, I have a motion.
A second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, I think Greg got in the second first. Uh, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Uh, Bobby Warren abstains.
And, and President Mitchum, you abstain as well?
I do. I, I don't want to be too important. All right, uh, with that, we will move to adjourn.
Okay, so everybody stays on and just goes right into the other agenda.
Yes, let me bring that up, we started on that. So we'll start the regular meeting of the city council of the City of Jersey Village on, uh, this Monday, August 17th, 2020. Um, we're gonna move into item A, call to order and announce the former's present, um, Secretary of Commerce is present.
Yes.
Move into item B, invocation and pledge of allegiance, uh, by former city council member, Sherry Shepherd.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to say thank you for our many blessings. Thank you for this city, our police, our fire departments, our city staff, and our volunteers that work hard to make this a great place to live, work, and play. We ask that you continue to bestow your blessings upon us and guide us down a path that brings glory to you. We ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
And I'm saying, Pledge of Allegiance, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance.
To the
United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Sherry. We will move into item C, citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes in their comments to city council. Uh, Lori, we have, uh, one person that has signed up to speak, that would be Mark Malloy.
That's correct.
And Mark, whenever you're ready, you're, uh, we'll unmute you, it looks like you're muted right now, but go ahead and unmute Mark and, uh, we'll start your five minutes here. Somebody unmute?
I can't do it, for some reason, it's not working for me.
All right, hang on, Mark, let's, uh, let's get you unmuted. It's not working for me. Bob, is Bob able to do it?
He went away.
There we go, uh, he's unmuted for a second. Now, by now, Mark, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go, go ahead, Mark, I'll start your five minutes now.
Okay, uh, Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle Path City Council Member of the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the 0817 2020 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of the meeting. I have signed into the Jersey Village City Council virtual engagement meeting this evening to ask the city government to give the citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, the full 20% homestead exemption instead of the 14% homestead exemption that the government is giving them at this time. I'm asking that the sixty, the 65-year and older additional homestead exemption be increased to $160,000 instead of the $75,000 exemption that the city government is giving them at this time. I listened to the city council budget work session held eight 20 20 20 and eight 21 20 20. The city government, from what I had listened to, had, does not have any plans of increasing the homestead exemption to the 20% or increasing the 65-year and older additional exemption increase to the $160,000 from the current $75,000 exemption. The city government is most likely going to approve an additional $200,000 in pay parity increases to the city staff. The city government is going to most likely approve a 2% minimum, up to 4% pay increase to, for the city employees. The city employees' healthcare insurance premium that the taxpayers of Jersey Village pay a majority of is going up 4.8% this year. The city government has an estimated 8.2 million dollars tied up in a land purchased by the city government on the south side of US 290. The city government has their plan to spend an additional $8 million on a new city hall located on the south side of US 290. So anyway, basically, the other part of what I wanted to say is that the Jersey Village City Government is planning on bypassing the Jersey Village taxpayers on being allowed to vote on if they want the city government to spend per contractor bid estimates five or more million dollars on the new golf course clubhouse convention center after an estimated, uh, 500 homes flooded in the city of Jersey Village, Texas in the year 2001. The city government hired an engineering firm to do a stormwater flood mitigation study to determine what could be done to, to reduce the flooding problem. One of the engineering studies recommendations was to build a 111-foot above sea level berm around the perimeter of the golf course. The berm was never built. The city government, after the 2016 tax day flood, paid for another flood mitigation engineering study, and one of the results of that study was to build a 108-foot above sea level berm around the perimeter of the golf course. The city government decided they did not want to build the berm at that second engineering study height. The city government then hired, from what I understand, is the engineering firm that originally recommended that the berm should be built at 111 feet above sea level. And now the recommendation has changed to recommend that the golf course berm can be built at 107 feet above sea level. The city government has reduced the elevation of the golf course berm by four feet. Question I have is why and how many residential homes and other properties will continue to be at risk of flooding due to the city government not wanting to build the berm at the original 2003 engineering study height of 111 feet above sea level? To me, it comes down to the city government's most important concern is the money losing heavily taxpayer subsidized golf course above all other issues. So anyway, I guess that's about it for tonight, so I appreciate you giving me time to talk.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else, uh, desiring to speak? If not, we will move on to, uh, item D. Section D, uh, item one, uh, crime control, Jersey Village, City of Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District. Receive, uh, item one, receive, uh, the adopted fiscal year 2020 dash 2021 budget from the Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District. Lori Cootie, that has your name on it?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is just a housekeeping item to, uh, go on the record that you have received the adopted budget from the Crime Control Prevention District. No action is needed, and we can move on to the next item.
So let me pull this up real quick. Regular session. All right, got a script. We'll move to, uh, item D two, uh, conduct a public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District's budget for the fiscal year 20 dash 2020 dash 2021. Uh, I now call to order this pu- public hearing of the Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District budget for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card presented to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearing is to give all interested parties the right to hear and be heard concerning the Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. I would now like to request the chief of police, Kirk Riggs, to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I presented the, uh, crime district, uh, budget a few minutes ago, and I'll just say, do you want me to go over that again, or just, uh, um, you have any questions on what I, uh, presented earlier tonight?
Anybody have anything for the chief? Something that popped in your head in the last 15 minutes, okay? There being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. And we'll move into item D three, consider resolution number 2020 dash 37, adopting the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Looking for a, a motion on the resolution?
I move we adopt resolution number 2020 dash 37.
Second.
I have a motion from Gary Wobenhorse in a second by Drew Lawson. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? Sherry, thank you much, thank you so much for joining us tonight. See you next time.
Right, thanks.
We'll move on to item E, city manager's report. Does anyone on council have any questions for Austin about the city manager reports?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple. Uh, actually, this, maybe this isn't right, but I mean, Austin, I was just wondering. Hold on a second, I gotta get my video back. I was just wondering. It is, I don't know if this is a proper question at this time, but how much money has been spent on the wayfinding in the monuments at this point? On that project, do you have that number handy?
I don't have that number right offhand.
All right. One, one of your reports anyway, so.
Um,
I'll catch up with you.
Sure.
Austin, is there anything that, that you wanted to, is, I know we have a new Parks and Recs director who's joining us. Is there anything that you wanted to highlight in your manager report?
Yeah, I want to, uh, definitely welcome Robert Bassford, he's our new Parks and Rec Director, he's got a lot of great experience, uh, coming from Florida, and he spent the last year down in Pearland. Um, we're excited to have him on board. Um, otherwise, um, do you want to point out the golf course had a great month last month? Right now, the, the deficit for the year is about $15,000, which is fantastic for the year. Um, so that's doing great, but otherwise, the report is, is there, if council has any questions, we're free to answer.
Um, in doing my homework, my favorite part of the agenda and the packet that we get is the city manager's report. It has so much information in it, and what's great about it too is it's actually all available to citizens. So citizens can download the packet every single month and see the same information that their city council members see and make decisions on. And I wanted to point out a couple of things, um, we, you know, we're not meeting in person, so, um, normally I'd give you a high five and a handshake, but, uh, Carrie, I just wanted to, I just want to say thanks for, your report is always very extensive and detailed. And we didn't really have that previously with the public works director. Um, I mean, I can really go through that, that PDF that you send out and see what's being worked on, where things stand. There's a lot of, uh, you do a really good job pointing out your staff members who do a really good job of saving the city a lot of money doing things in-house these days. So I wanted to just say thanks, thank you for that. Um, and the police reports that are in there too, they're, they're, and, and the, and the fire department reports that are in there, they really do a good job of letting us know exactly what's going on in the city. Um, the crime stats are great, they're year-over-year crime stats. Um, definitely with COVID going on, there's actually been a drop in crime in, in the city. Um, but, uh, it's just great to see that, that, that cases are actively being worked, they're being resolved. It's great to see all of the runs that this, that the fire department does, uh, our EMS are very active at the moment, so. This is all information that is available to every citizen. If they want to know what's going on in each department, they don't, you're welcome to call and ask me and ask the city council members, but you can always download the city packet and look at it and go into the city manager report and look at the finances for the city, look at the different, uh, reports for what's being worked on, uh, the different, different things that are happening with the golf course, happening with public works. It's a great information package. One of the really neat things that I'm seeing right now is, and I, I watch this numbers, one thing that I pull up almost every single week, um, is the sales tax numbers. And with a global pandemic going on, the city is still more than likely, or actually, not likely, we already surpassed this week, uh, with the reports that came in, were $172,000 over the sales tax budget, projected budget that we, that we projected, even before COVID, uh, that we projected, we're still over that, and we still have, uh, more to go. And so we're now projecting, uh, an, an overage of about $700,000 above what we did last year, above what we, I'm sorry, above what we projected. Um, and that just, a lot of us campaigned on increasing the sale tax revenue base so that we're not such a property tax base, uh, revenue-based general fund. And to see that actually happen, uh, sooner than I ever anticipated, but also given all of the challenges that we've hit, uh, with, with everything that's happened over the last five years, including this pandemic, that, that we've basically done that. That is, that speaks to a group effort of past and current city leadership, past and current city managers, past and current city staff, all working toward, all identifying the problem, finding what other cities have successfully implemented in order to get this goal accomplished, putting that in place and then executing. And we're seeing the results, and the beneficiaries are the citizens who are hopefully, uh, you know, we already raised the homestead exemption, we already raised the 65 exemption, stable exemptions, uh, we can definitely chat about that as a possibility of doing it again because of, because of what's happening. Uh, but also the, the type of businesses that are coming into our city are a part better, so it's a quality of life thing, it's a revenue thing. It's giving, putting money back into the pockets of our citizens who have been paying taxes, uh, in the city for a really long time at a, at a, at a comparatively higher rate. But, uh, being able to give that money back to them, and that was a, that was a goal that a lot of us got on council to accomplish, and I, I mean, I'm not going to put a banner behind me that says mission accomplished, but we did it, we, we, these numbers are very, very promising, and they, and, um, year-over-year, they're sticking around, that's the other thing, it doesn't seem to be a flash in the pan, it's looking, they're, they're, they've trended upward, they've stuck that way, and I think, I think this is something that should definitely be celebrated. So I want to say thanks to everybody who's, who's participated in that. Is there any other comments about the city manager report, uh, from any of their council members? All right, we will move along to the consent agenda. Uh, are there any items on the consent agenda that a city council member would like to move to the regular? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Gary Wobenhorse in a second by Bobby Warren, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Move along to the regular session agenda, item number one. Consider resolution number 2020 dash 39, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Quitzolers Incorporated for CBGT dash MIT Grant Engineer slash Architectural slash Surveying, Surveying Services. And that's, uh, Austin, please, city man, city manager.
Hey, Aaron counselors, um, we had a, a look at this last month, um, we added a little bit more information to the, uh, agenda request this month. Um, we've included the summary of all the total points for each of the respondents, you can tell that we had We've included the summary of all the total points for each of the respondents. You can tell that we had three that were very close overall for the responses. We also included the RFQ criteria for scoring, so council could see the matrix that all of the engineering firms were, were graded on. Who is ours, they came out ahead of the, the rest. They have a lot of great experience. They can highly recommended from other communities. The total level of effort for the application that we're looking at right now is estimated at twenty-six thousand dollars. We're looking at, right now it looks like a water project, which would come from the utility fund for the, the pre-application work there. We've got a list of the services that they would do for the pre, pre-funding services, helping to create the application. And then the post-funding services, those costs will be set at the GLO rates if we're awarded a, a, a grant. If there's any questions from council, happy to answer those.
Any questions for Austin? Yeah, was it, was this, this was the item that we tabled last month, correct?
Correct, yep.
And everyone who had concerns, has this new information brought to your attention, any, any other concerns? Okay, if not, I'm looking for.
Real quick, Austin, it, I mean, will the grant cover the pre-funded spend if we get it?
Uh, no, the grant would not cover the, the pre, pre-funding things.
That said, if we, if we don't get the grant, would we go ahead and do this project if not now, in the future, and where we could leverage the, the study?
Right, we could definitely leverage some of it in the future, not all of it, but you could definitely leverage some of it.
Any other questions for Austin? If not, looking for a motion on resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-nine?
We'll make a motion. Second.
Have a motion in the second. That was Greg Holden with the motion and Gary Robin Horse with the second. Any more discussion on topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We will move on to item number two, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash four zero, authorizing an interlocal grant agreement of coronavirus relief fund, CRF, small, small cities, teams and conditions between the city of Jersey Village and Harris County. Austin Blee, city manager.
Mayor and counselors, recently the commissioner's court voted to authorize fifty-five dollars per person based on the twenty eighteen census numbers for COVID-related expenses to local municipalities. So that would mean that Jersey Village is eligible for up to four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Right now, we've got about thirty thousand in expenses for supplies. We could also get reimbursed for some of the extra sick time pay we've had to pay out for the emergency paid sick leave. The other big thing about this four hundred and thirty-seven thousand that we could do is we could allocate some of that to the county to utilize for business grants to Jersey Village businesses that have applied. If, if the council wants to do that, partnering with the county to do that would be fantastic. They would run the program. They've already got everything set up, the applications, all the people there to manage it. That'd be my strong recommendation to do that if the council wants to go down that, that route. So any, we cannot be reimb, or we can be reimbursed first, we can be reimbursed for costs that we incur from here until the end of the calendar year as well. So I want to recommend earmarking all of it for businesses or whatever. I would try and leave some back and we can always go back later if we need to. So in order to move forward with this, we need the council to approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty. And if there's kind of a dollar threshold that the council's thinking to, to allocate towards a business grants, that information will be useful as well.
Well, that was my question, whether that was, that, that, that should be necessary, shouldn't it?
I, I, I would recommend it. I think that's going to be a great use. I don't think we're going to use the four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. I, last week I did ask the county if they could tell us how many Jersey Village businesses had applied and they said that they, they would get back to me with that information and I haven't yet gotten that information. So I don't know the level of need that's out there from that. I do know that most of the people that filled out the form when we had that out there back in early, early, or mid-March, I guess, early into the COVID stuff. There was about twelve or so applicants that are people that expressed interest in that. I'm assuming most of them probably tried to get in on the county things as well. And there might be some that went for the county that didn't give us the, their information as well, so. I don't have a good number as to how many businesses are out there in Jersey Village that want it or what number to really recommend.
But if we have four hundred and thirty-eight thousand allocated and we're, we've already spent thirty thousand, how much more would you think, I, I would have suggested we cover our costs and then allocate the rest back to the county.
I would say if we allocated somewhere between two hundred and three hundred thousand to the county, I think that would be okay. I want to leave some buffer just in case we have more expenses. And if we get to November and we're not having very much, we can always come back and rediscuss the issue at that point.
I can't think of anything different that would occur in the future that hasn't already occurred in the past few months. I'm thinking that three hundred thousand might be a good number.
I, I tend to agree. If you do the math on that, if, if we were to, if we were to take the thirty thousand dollars that we already have expenses for and gave three hundred thousand dollars back to the county for a small, a local small business grant fund, what would be left over for any future expenses for the city from now until the end of the calendar year would be about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty substantial buffer, just to purchase the case. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you knew what, roughly what the amount was that we've paid out for extra sick time under the emergency paid sick leave?
As of the first, at, through July, it was about eighteen thousand dollars, I want to say.
Okay.
I think three hundred thousand dollars going towards, you know, some local businesses who are very much struggling at this time. You know, we thought about doing that at the very beginning of COVID, on our own dime and you doing our own program. I, I can say that the program that Harris County put together, I think they ran it through HDAC. And, and it was run very, very well. And I'm, I'm assuming they had probably used the same interface, same, as a document portal, you submitted all that you needed to submit and it was run very efficiently. They followed up all the time, so I think our, our business owners would be in very good hands. And I think that number is, is a good, you know, for the type of businesses that we have and the type of businesses that are impacted by COVID with people not, people with the lower foot, foot traffic, I think that would be a very good number. So my recommendation would be to make a motion. I can't make a motion, but you guys can, of, 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 of three hundred thousand dollars being allocated for a small business grant fund.
Um, I think I'm possibly the minority on this and I understand the first instinct to cover our own costs. But looking at past meetings, city managers' reports, our current budget and actuals, we've actually had a fairly decent year. And we really haven't been affected by COVID to the extent a lot of this smaller players have. And I can understand wanting to cover our thirty thousand, possibly eighteen thousand in emergency fund, but I'm, I'm wondering if we hold off on that for right now? And let's see where, how much of the funds are used by small business in our city? And come back to it, if they, if we, there's enough applications that they use up what we allocate them now. Maybe we put all of this money, this is, this is extra cash, this is reimbursement for disaster funds that we can eat thirty thousand pretty easily. We really can. And a lot of small businesses can't. And if there are enough applications in the city for the full amount, I would rather see the full amount go to the small businesses that were much more impacted than our city was.
Any thoughts on that?
A question, so if we allocate it back to the county, will that money be used exclusively for Jersey Village businesses?
Correct, exclusively for Jersey Village businesses.
And if it isn't used?
It would, they would have to allocate it back to us. I, I would say it'd be easier to allocate a portion of our funds to the county and then if we need, if, if there's a need for more to come back and reallocate more of our funds to the county back in, you know, September, October. We, we are not under any time constraints to submit reimbursement requests. We can gather all the documentation and be ready to draw, or ready to submit a reimbursement for whatever the final number is going to be. And we can hold off on that until November if we wanted to. So I, if, if we want to go with what Counselor Singleton's suggesting, we can certainly, you know, go that route. But I would, I guess I would not recommend going over the three hundred thousand dollars at the moment, just because I don't know what else, what the county has for need or what the businesses have for need to account.
Well, that's my feelings is go to the three hundred and then if we're not using it and the businesses are needing it, then we go higher.
Yeah, I think, I think that seems like a, a good compromise. And I agree with James there. I mean, I have no problem giving it all to, to a program, but I think, I think, um, let's see what the three hundred thousand dollars does. Because it was, that's great that it's Jersey Village only businesses. And small businesses, I'm, I'm sure we, we're allowed to set what, what the parameters need to be. Let's see, let's see who applies, see what we can get. And if it, if it ends up being more, we can come back to this and, and, and add more of our allocation back to that fund. Does that sound like something everyone can agree on?
Yeah, that makes sense. And hopefully if the sales tax numbers being so strong still is any indication, businesses might need a little help, but not, not as much as.
Right, well, it, it, it goes to show, I mean, businesses, you know, businesses are contributing to our general fund just as much as, as they're, they're, you know, myself and you and other property owners. They are as, as part of this, a part of this community that funds our quality of life and contributes so much to our, to our city that when it's their time of need, I think, I mentioned this at the beginning of COVID, I got a little choked up actually, because I know what, I know what it's like to go through a disaster and you're looking at your business just fall apart. And luckily, a lot of them have appeared to have pulled through and, and excelled and adapted and done a fantastic job of, of emerging in this time. But if there can be any sort of help, I, I, you know, I'm a business owner myself. I probably would not be allowed to apply for this, but, um, you know, we, still, it would be great for businesses to have, have that ability to add on to their bottom line and help and exceed and make that number go up. So with that, I'm looking for a motion. Laurie, go ahead.
So Austin, I wanted to ask on moving forward, does the council just need to have a consensus on the amount and then vote on the resolution? Or is the three hundred thousand part of the resolution?
Let's, i- if we can, I guess maybe we should add a section four to the resolution allocating three hundred thousand dollars to the grant funds.
So with that, I'm looking for a motion on resolution number twenty twenty dash four zero.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty four zero as adding section four is described by Austin.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by James Singleton and a second by Bobby Warren. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. For this next item, myself and Drew Lawson have signed conflict of interest forms and we will be recusing ourselves from this item and will return after Mayor Protem Bobby Warren completes this item.
Okay, and then, uh, just to be clear, Lori, in recusing, do they need to leave the meeting or?
They should mute themselves and have no discussion and no vote.
Got it, okay, just wanted to be sure. Then moving on to the agenda item, we will call agenda item G three, consider ordinance number two thousand twenty dash one nine, amending chapter six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, alcoholic beverages. By amending section six point seven, consumption prohibited between certain hours at certain places to allow for consumption and sales at times, locations in accordance with the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code, providing a penalty, providing severability, providing for publication and providing an effective date. Uh, and this has, uh, let's see, whose name is on this?
Lori.
Lori, thank you. Lori, if you could introduce the, this item?
Yes, Mayor Protem, this item is, uh, came about because chapter one oh five of the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code permits certain types of businesses carrying certain types of permits issued by the, or licenses issued by the TABC to sell alcohol during the hours of ten AM and twelve noon, as long as they with that order serve food. And this item is basically just to bring our code up to date with chapter one oh five of the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission.
Okay, uh, so with that, uh, any discussion on the item?
Well, Lori, what brought this on?
We did have an initial business in town call and ask about it, stating that they had been in contact with the TABC about whether they could or they couldn't under the license that they held from TABC and they were explained by them that yes, they could if, if it was not against our, if it was permitted by the city as well. We did a little bit of research and I believe that, uh, Justin, if you want to chime in that it, we have to follow state law anyway, or how does that work?
Yeah, for this, so the particular deal on this one was that there's, for certain, for certain permit holders, I think, I can't remember now, Lori, but I think it's the beer, there's wine, a couple of others, mixed beverage, yeah, mixed beverage, however, however TABC labels them. Um, they have, they limit hours on when you can use those permits, but there's this exception for several of those permits that say, you know, between the hours, they're generally between ten and noon or around that time. As long as you serve food with the beverage, then you can have these extended hours. And the, and the way that the TABC writes it, those look like, um, at least in my opinion, they look by right for the permit holder, as long as you're following that particular rule. But, so the change here was taking what was essentially just a blank prohibition against serving alcohol before noon for certain requirements and allowing that to be amended if this permit holder met those qualifications from TABC. So essentially that, that's why it says, it's just to bring it into line with the TABC rules is that in some instances, there's going to be certain permit holders that can serve before noon on Sundays. But really that'd be, that's between TABC and the permit holder for how they do that. And TABC's rules are, are pretty clear that, you know, how that extra two hours or three hours can be handled. And so I think this amendment will help the city just make that a little bit less of a headache for everybody.
In other words, we're avoiding the possibility that a permit holder who has action taken against them by the city under our ordinance doesn't sue us on the basis that their permit allows them and state law trumps our municipal law.
Right.
That's probably smart. Any other discussion on the item?
Lori, in the past, I've seen several of these ordinances that have changed our rules. And a lot of times they are done by, you're, you've taken a very proactive approach and trying to make sure that our ordinances stay in line with TABC state laws. And that, this to me looks like it's just like all those previous times where we have made sure that the city stayed in line with state law, correct?
That's correct.
I, I, TABC laws frustrate me to begin with. They are convoluted and not, not very conducive to doing business. But the more we can stay in line with state law and just match their roles, so we're not changing or like Bobby said, avoiding litigation because we're being more restrictive and not inconsistent with the state. I'm, I'm, I support this.
Yeah, I, I will, oh, go ahead, Greg.
In looking at ordinances like this, I, I generally being in line with state law makes it easier for everybody, but, but also even from a competitive advantage. I, I hate to pay, I, I would hate to place more restrictions on Jersey Village businesses than, than the businesses they compete against. So, I mean, we look at barriers to entry, look at ease of doing business. This is one of the ordinances that allows them to compete on an even playing field. So I, I totally agree that, that we need to be in line with TABC and in line with all the other businesses that they compete with.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And I will say, I know that sometimes people are a little concerned when it comes to talking about loosening restrictions on alcohol. They think about noise and, 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 you know, crime and, and rowdiness and all of that. Uh, I will say the Sunday brunch crowd is probably not the first thing you think about when you think about people getting drunk and rowdy. So I, I would say that this is, uh, from a safety standpoint, is probably a pretty safe bet. And I'm willing to bet that, uh, for a lot of the people here in Jersey Village, that this would be a very popular move, particularly if they can go to brunch someplace pretty close by instead of going elsewhere. So Greg's point, they probably are going elsewhere because they, they don't have other options. So it's great that there is a, a business that, that is interested in providing that. So I think it'd be popular all, overall. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move, we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Robin Horse and a second by Councilmember Singleton. Just as a reminder for anyone listening, the Uh, just as a reminder for anyone listening, uh, the, uh, before we move to a vote, uh, the city charter does allow when the mayor pro tem is presiding, allows, uh, for me to vote, um, even though the presiding officer typically would not. Uh, so before we move to a vote, any further discussion? Okay, uh, so, uh, on, uh, ordinance 2020 dash one nine, all those in favor, please raise your head and hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? And with that, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, I will, uh, now turn, uh, the chair, the presiding chair back over to, uh, Mayor Mitchum.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate that. Move along to item number four, consider ordinance number 2020 dash two zero. Adopting the water and wastewater rate calculation methods recommended by Jones, Carter and Raftellus. Uh, Harry Ward, Lipworks Director.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, last month, we tackled one of the requirements for the budget. And that was impact fees. We had to set impact fees, uh, for the upcoming projects for the next five years. Jones and Carter was retained to do that and they looked 10 years ahead in setting the five year rate. Because the research and the second thing that we have to fulfill is the water and wastewater rate schedule for the next five years. Uh, a lot of that research overlapped, so it made sense to retain Jones and Carter to also do the water and wastewater rate study for us. Uh, so we have Alan Moon and a company called Raftellus, who did the financial modeling to explain that.
Okay, uh, Alan, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work and present the, um, water and wastewater rates analysis. So like Harry said, in conjunction with the capital improvements plan and impact you say that was presented last month. Um, we've been working with the city and with Raftellus to analyze and evaluate, um, the water and wastewater rates. Uh, we've been working with, um, Austin, with Harry and Isabel with the city and with Angie Flores and Tim Williams with Raftellus since February on this analysis. Um, so Angie Flores is here tonight to, uh, present the findings of the rate study. And so I believe Angie is also calling in. Um, I don't know if there's a attendee with an area code of I-12, but I think that's how she wanted to.
All right, does, uh,
Be unmuted.
Okay. I think we're joined. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Okay, so let me, um, start sharing my screen. Um, let me see here. Okay, so, um, I am Angie Flores. Um, I am with Raftellus as, um, hopefully you can see the presentation mode.
Yep, I can see it.
Okay. So I'm Angie Flores. I'm with Raftellus. Uh, we've been working as, uh, Alan was saying, uh, with Jones Carter to complete a financial planning and rate study for you. Um, I'm located in Austin. Um, and have worked with Alan and Jones and Carter on other projects in the past. Um, so, um, we've, uh, been excited to work with the city of Jersey Village through this process. Um, I put together this presentation, um, to just basically walk you through the process that we've gone through um, for the rate study. Um, please feel free to stop me if you have any questions as I go through the presentation. On this slide, you'll see a brief agenda of what I'm going to cover. Basically, I'll start with the objectives of the study and then go through, um, really all of the assumptions that we put into the model, um, to complete that rate study. Um, the objective of the studies, of the study was really to complete a 10-year financial plan for the city that allows you to see, um, you know, the, the projections for the city as it, as it relates to water and wastewater rates. Um, and this plan will allow the city to maintain the financial health of your utility. Um, part of the objectives was to, to look at your costs, um, as again, as it relates to the utility and develop the revenue requirements based on your, um, historical costs, your budgets, um, and that projection. In looking at that revenue requirement, we looked at your capital program and developed, um, a profile for those capital projects. Uh, Jones Carter, um, as you know, was doing an impact fee study that allowed us to, to pull into the financial plan, your capital projects. Finally, um, in looking at your, um, revenue requirements and your cost of your utility, we projected, um, what your rates would need to be for the five-year forecast period. And we'll be talking about that, um, at the end of this presentation. When we do, um, financial planning, um, the financial plan elements are very important and become the, um, foundation of the financial plan. Um, we look at our inputs, um, as shown here on the slide. Um, looking at your customer accounts, your build consumption, um, the revenues of the utility, um, your expenses and your capital plan. And obviously it's important to look at your, at the city's cash position, um, to ensure that, that you have a stable, um, utility in the forecast period that we're looking at. Um, so again, just looking, taking into account the capital project funding, um, looking at your policies and targets, um, to really determine what your annual cash flows will look like based on all of those assumptions. In particular for Jersey Village, um, we certainly, we did look at your historical consumption and then based your consumption forecast based on historical growth. The revenues that we've considered in your financial planning model are based on your historical consumption, your existing rates, and ensuring that you're covering your, your revenue requirements or expenses, um, as it relates specifically to your needs. So the next part I'm going to cover here are the connections and, um, consumption that we considered in the model. This table shows your water connections by class. So you have, um, seven classes. Um, you have residential, residential sprinklers, uh, commercial, commercial sprinklers, uh, your municipal accounts. And then you have an outside city commercial customer. So in total, your connections are about 3,200. You have seen a little bit of growth over the past three years, um, in connections. And those are primarily, uh, reflected in your residential customers, as you can see here on this table. Your sewer customers are closer to about 2,400 connections. And in your sewer class, you have, in your sewer classes, you have residential, commercial. And again, your municipal accounts are reflected here. This next graph shows your historical water consumption. As you can see, um, overall, your, um, water consumption, um, you know, kind of stays the same by class. Um, you can see here that in 2019, when we had, um, we had some rain, um, I know in Texas, we had rain really until about June or July of last year. Um, and so that's probably what is reflected here in some of these, uh, reduced consumptions in 2019. But overall, your, your consumption stays, um, about the same. Um, and again, is, is mostly affected by weather, which is kind of what we see throughout Texas. These next graphs, um, I like to show these to our clients so that you can see how, um, your, your consumption varies uh, depending on summer usage, um, throughout, you know, any, any year. Um, so this graph here is your residential water consumption by month. Um, for your residential class, um, your average monthly usage per connection is about 6,000 gallons. Now, you do have a sprinkler class for your residential customers. Um, so, so while you, you are seeing that increase in summer usage, some of that is tempered by the fact that you do have some residential customers that have a separate sprinkler meter. But still you see the effect of watering that happens in the summertime, um, which is again, what you typically see for a residential class. So this graph shows your sprinkler consumption. And so here you can really see that pronounced increase in consumption in the summer months. Um, and so that's reflected here in this peak monthly usage of 11,000. So on average, when you consider the 12 months, your sprinkler class will use about 4,400 gallons on average. But in this peak month, in these peak months, um, that usage increases to about 11,000 gallons. So again, that's pretty typical for sprinklers because everyone water uses those sprinklers mostly in the summertime. And as reflected here, it really decreases in the winter months. So here is your commercial class. Your average monthly consumption, on, on average for your commercial customers is, um, 66,000 gallons. Um, so this reflects, um, what you typically see for a commercial class. But what's different from, for your commercial class from residential class is that their usage typically stays pretty level throughout the, the calendar year. But just like we saw in the residential sprinkler class, on your commercial class, you are, you see this increase in consumption in the summer months. Um, again, because the sprinklers are used more in the summer months and then really reduces in the months where, um, where we have more rain and it's cooler. Um, for your commercial sprinkler class, that average usage is about 36,000 gallons. But in this peak month, that's closer to 86,000 gallons. So you do have one commercial customer that's outside the city limits. Um, so I did want to show you, um, their consumption. Um, you can see that, um, their, their consumption seems to, um, stay. It, it does look like it changed a little bit between 2017 and 2018. Um, we're only showing your consumption on 2019 through September, since we looked at this through, for fiscal year. Their average monthly usage, um, is, is 9,100 gallons, uh, per month. So while they do, they do use about 200, or they did in 2018, use about 272,000 gallons. In 2017, that was, uh, that was only 144,000 gallons. For the OCL commercial customer, they also have a sprinkler, um, meter. Um, but it's interesting, um, their consumption, um, is staying pretty, um, pretty level for the sprinkler system. Um, my guess is that's due to some common areas that they tend to, to water, um, all year long. Um, but you still see that their consumption, um, is reduced in these weather, winter months. So their average, uh, monthly consumption for that meter is about 5,800 gallons. Um, so this is your historical sewer consumption. Um, sewer is a little bit different in how we bill it. As y'all know, um, residential is based on winter usage, um, an average of your winter consumption. Commercial is going to be based on actual water usage. Um, but again, you know, that doesn't really fluctuate a whole lot um, in the his, historical consumption data. Um, this slide really, it reflects the fact that we use a winter average. And so you can see that, um, in 2019, the winter average actually went down. Um, again, reflecting that reduced consumption, um, in 20, for the winter months. Um, your reduced water consumption in the winter months. So, um, so it did go down. Um, so the average monthly usage per connection for residential sewer is 5,000 gallons currently. So this graph again shows the commercial, uh, sewer consumption. Um, again, this is based on actual water usage. Um, it's pretty level, um, but it does tend to fluctuate, uh, month by month. And so, um, here you can see, um, you know, this is 2019. So what I was talking about was, you know, it rained until about June and then, and it stopped. So then people started watering again. And so you can see that here. So now we get into the revenue requirements and these, uh, represent the cost of the system. Um, here on this graph, we're showing your operations and maintenance expenses. And this is, um, the combined, this reflects the combined utility. So here we are showing water and sewer combined. Um, you can see the, um, O and M is reflected in the blue bar or the light blue bar. And then the green bar is the sewer O and M. The dark blue bar here reflects the cash funded capital. Um, and I'll go into the capital here in a little bit. Um, but we are assuming for the forecast period that you will cash fund capital in these years here where you see this dark blue bar. For the O and M, we assumed, um, an increase of 3% in 2021 and then an increase of 2% in cost for the forecast period. We did that for all your costs with the exception of salaries, which were increasing by 3% for the entire forecast period. Um, we are not assuming any debt service in your revenue requirement. Um, you do not have any existing debt service. Um, and instead for future, for the future capital program, um, that will be cash funded and no debt, no debt will be issued. We did go through and allocate costs between your water and sewer utilities. Um, and basically what we did, and this was based on, um, a discussion with staff. Um, we, we split the O and M 50/50, um, between water and sewer. And so that's what this represents. This O and M here is, um, the, the 50% that went to water. In this graph, the capital costs are allocated based on the facilities that are being funded, um, in that year. So these are 100% water facilities. And then we did the same thing for sewer. Um, and so you can see here, um, these green bars here reflect the sewer facilities that will be funded, um, in the forecast period. So, um, this graph shows, uh, the capital improvements and this is, this just reflects the total capital improvements um, that we're assuming in the forecast period. In total, they, um, amount to seven, about seven and a half million dollars. Um, and all of that will be cash funded. And so this shows the split between water and sewer. Um, also, um, you, you are collecting impact fees. Um, and there are some impact fee eligible projects that are projected in the 10-year capital improvement plan. Uh, but they are not being funded, um, in the five-year forecast period that we're showing here. They will be funded, um, with impact. There are some, those projects will be funded with impact fees, but they're outside this forecast period. So that is in the financial planning model.
If, if I can ask very quickly, Angie, uh, just to kind of drive home the point here. Um, so the capital expenditures that we are seeing reflected here are pro, almost entirely capital expenditures focused on maintaining our current connections. In other words, just maintaining the current infrastructure, whereas the impact fee projects will be the ones that are, the ones that Whereas the impact fee projects will be the ones that are, the ones that are funded with impact fees will be those related to expanding to new connections.
That's right. That's right. The impact fee eligible projects are your projects related to growth. And so these, these projects here are mostly just maintain, maintenance and are, help me out here, Alan, but we have those sorts of things.
Yeah. And the reason I bring that up is just for any citizen that's out there watching this that says, my fees are going up so that such and such new neighborhood can be built or such and such new business can come in, but that's not the case here.
Right, right. Now, these are, these are definitely projects that are needed by the city to maintain your utility.
Thank you.
So where are we with rates? So in looking at the financial plan, we looked at your revenue, first looking at where your revenue is based on existing rates. So this assumes that you do nothing to your rates. You leave them at the level that they're at currently. And so you can see here that leaving your rates where they are now, this is the level of revenue that you would collect. Now, that would be sufficient in 2021. But you can see that there's shortfalls that would occur when you compare it to your revenue requirement here. An important thing to look at when we're considering your revenue from rates is your, your fund balances. And so this is your, this reflects your fund balances that the city has currently. And this is 2020. And so you can see that these are your current cash balances. If you were to leave the rates where they are currently, you can see that by 2025, your cash balance is reduced below your target. And this blue line, this light blue line here reflects your target.
Angie, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Yeah.
The water O and M and the sewer O and M, that's basically the usage, right?
This is, this reflects your operation and maintenance expenses is what the water O and M and sewer O and M reflect.
That's the expenses.
These are your expenses.
Okay, so.
Operations costs.
If the column is higher, then there's more usage?
If the column is higher than the line, then your expenses exceed your revenues.
Well, yeah, I understand that part. I'm just not understanding how the revenue line is flat when I'm interpreting this chart as showing the usage as being at different levels.
It's actually not.
Well, here we're just.
It's showing the cash funded capital. So those are the, if you look at the sewer O and M, and I could be wrong, but the sewer O and M, the water O and M, those actually appear to be about the same. It's the capital, it's the cash funded capital that tends to go, varies every year, that tends to drive that whole thing up. So that when we're investing in new infrastructure, that drives it up each year.
And this is only on the existing rates too?
This is existing rates, yeah.
Right. This assumes that you leave your existing rates the same. So you're essentially collecting the same revenue every year.
Okay.
So for visual purposes, I'm a visual person too. If you take the dark blue out, which is all the capital expenditures, that sewer O and M and water O and M, those would probably look pretty darn similar. Since the capital.
Right, because we're only.
Changing.
That's right. That's right. We're only increasing the O and M by about 3% per year.
Right.
So that's correct. The capital, the cash funded capital is what's fluctuating here the most. And that's what's causing it to go up to the $6 million and above.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, without rating rate adjustments, then you would be reducing your cash balance below your intended target.
How is that target set?
That is based on your financial policy for your operating reserves.
Do we use the same, Isabel, do we use the same policy for our utility as we do for the city's general fund? 25% of operating expenses?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And so let me go back here. So you can see here that the target is going up slightly and that's because of the inflation that we're putting on your O and M expenses. So in looking at the financial plan, you know, again, we want to maintain your targets. And so we have made some assumptions for rate adjustments, which I'll go over here shortly. But based on those rate adjustments, and this, this line reflects those rate adjustments. You can see here that now there are, you know, these three years, we're meeting those costs. But in these years where the cash funded capital tends to increase, we're still slightly under your revenue requirement. But as you'll see in this next slide, we are able to maintain your cash balance above your target for the forecast period. So essentially what we're doing is utilizing your cash balance to fund those projects, which allows you to, to keep from issuing debt for the city. So these are the forecasted rate increases that we have in the financial planning model. And we've adjusted the base rates by 8.7%. You'll see here shortly that that's not a very big increase. It's actually about a dollar. And it's only in that first year that we're doing the 8.7% increase to the meter size fee. The rest of the increases are 3% to the volume charges. Now, I do want to point out that we are leaving the outside rates level. Your, your outside city limit customers are currently paying a pretty significant differential compared to your inside city limit customers. And so we recommend that you leave them the same at this time for the forecast period. So here's the adjustments. And this is your residential class. And I'm going to go through the classes. Let me know how much detail you want me to go into. But here is the dollar here increase that I was talking about. And this reflects that 8.7% increase in the meter fee. The rest of the charges are increasing by 3%. I do want to talk a little bit about your, your volumetric rates. I just want to say that, you know, inclining block rates are what we see for residential classes. So you're definitely in a good place with your inclining block rates. That's kind of what we see throughout the industry. So we didn't make any adjustments to those volumetric rates. And here in a minute, I'm going to show you what the impact of these rate changes are to your classes. These are the sprinkler water rates. So again, we just made the same adjustment to them. And so here's the, again, with the sprinklers, you have an inclining block rate. That charge, you know, they pay more depending on, the more water you use, the more you pay. Here are your commercial rates. So for them, their water meter fee is a little bit higher. So that 8.7% does result in a little bit higher increase. It's $4.35. And then here's their volumetric rates. They have uniform rates, which is again typically what we see for a commercial class is a uniform rate. And again, here's your outside city limit commercial customer where we're leaving their rates pretty level or leaving them level. So for sewer, again, this is your residential class. That 8.7% is a little over a dollar. But it's going from 1790 and 1946. And then the volumetric rates are increasing by 3% for the forecast period. And again, residential pays based on an average water consumption for November through February. And these are the commercial rates. And the outside city limit, commercial sewer rates. So what does this mean for your customers? This is, this reflects a customer, a residential customer using 6,000 gallons of water and a sewer of 5,000 gallons. So these were kind of those little benchmarks that I talked about when we were talking about your classes. Obviously, you'll have some residential customers that'll use more than 6,000. You may have some that use less than 6,000. But overall, for an average residential customer, they'll have an increase of about $11 per month for the forecast period. So it'll go from $80 combined bill to $91 for the forecast period. This is your sprinkler customer. Again, their average usage was about 4,400 gallons. Obviously, in the summertime, it goes up a little bit more as we saw in the, in the historical consumption slides. But they'll see a $6 per month increase over the forecast period. Now, for those residential customers that have both a regular meter and a sprinkler meter, their combined bill will increase by $16 a month from $123 to $139. And this is all based on those average usages that I had before. Again, that'll vary depending on actual usage.
I don't know if you, if you looked at this or not, but out of curiosity, if, if someone used the same amount of water, but they didn't have a sprinkler, say they were a residential connection that just used 4,400 more gallons from their single connection, do you know, are they saving money or are they spending more money by having that second connection? Ignoring the efficiency of a sprinkler system over a hose and sprinkler?
They would probably be paying a little bit more because, let's see here.
You're charged on the sewer for that, whereas on a sprinkler meter, aren't you exempt from the sewer costs?
Oh, that's a good point.
Okay.
The sprinkler is not included in that sewer cost.
Okay, that makes sense. I was, just something that kind of stuck out at me when comparing the two, but yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So if you don't water your grass during the dormant months, it's, it's probably the same. Although the rates look a little lower for the non-sprinkler.
Yeah, I was just thinking we would want to incentivize the use of the sprinkler meters because generally automated sprinkler systems are more efficient than hose and sprinkler. But yeah, that's good.
Unless you're my, like my husband and you water anyway without the sprinkler system.
Well, yeah, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, while you have the upfront costs, the savings and the cheaper water with the lack of sewer fees and the regulation and automatic, there's cost savings in the long run.
Yeah. So here's the commercial customer or commercial bills. They're going to see $129 per month increase over the forecast period. And again, their consumption's a little bit higher. It's at 66,000 and 64,000. Although, you know, even though it's higher, they do have a uniform rate. So it's not going to necessarily fluctuate a whole lot like you do with the residential class. And here's the commercial sprinkler. They'll see, theirs won't increase quite as much. You know, it'll increase $39. Again, this is primarily due to the fact that the commercial sprinkler is on a uniform rate and not an inclining block like you have on your residential sprinkler. So again, from a total combined, they're going to see an increase of $168 per month over the forecast period. So that concludes my presentation. If y'all have any questions, now I think y'all are going to be considering an ordinance that will adopt those, those five-year forecast rates.
Any questions from council?
The question I had is on residential rates, once it got over 25,000 gallons, it just about doubled. What's, what's the thought process behind that?
Typically with your inclining block rates, you want to, you know, there, there's usually a objective of conservation. And so typically those inclining block rates will have a much higher rate in those upper blocks, really to try to incentivize less consumption. You likely don't have a whole lot of customers that use water in that upper block. So you really have to balance when you're looking at your revenues. You really need to balance. You don't want to push too much of your revenues out into those upper blocks. But you, typically when these inclining block rates are adopted, again, it's, it's to, to promote conservation and incentivize folks to use less water. And so you tend to have that upper block really send a price signal.
Yeah. Are there any provisions for, for instance, people filling a swimming pool for a kind of a one-off deal? Do we, do we make any provisions within the city for that, Austin?
Isabel?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. What, what we usually do is if they fill out the pool during the winter month, we take that provision and we, we're not charging the sewer charges because of filling up the pool.
Okay.
Yeah, since we use the water during the winter month to, to charge for the sewer charges, if they do that during the winter month, then when we calculate the, the water usage during the winter month, if they fill up the pool, we don't use the, we take off the water that they use to fill up the pool. So to charge you for the sewer charges.
Okay, so there are provisions to, to help people with that?
Are those on a separate meter? Generally would, I, I don't have one, so I don't know if they're.
No, they're typically on the same meter.
On the same meter, yes.
Okay.
Don't fill your pool in the wintertime.
Or if you do, let Isabel know.
Well, if you don't, if you do, you have to let finance know and we will take away the difference of the water that you use to fill up the pool. So we will not charge you, we will not charge you extra for the sewer.
I'm just going to run a hose down from your house, Gary.
I, you, you mentioned outside city business. There's one business that we're providing service to and that their difference is significant currently. Now, I don't know why that is, why that's been the practice. But why would we stop that? Why not continue, just be uniform in our raising of the rates? They're a customer just like anybody else. Not that I understand why there was a difference to begin with. But why did you choose that option?
So in Texas here recently, so prior to, I guess about four or five years ago, well, let me back up. Well, let me back up. So cities have original jurisdiction for ratemaking. So basically what that means is that inside the city limits. If, if, if a customer has an issue with your rates. You as a voted body has the jurisdiction to change rates. And, and customers appeal to you if they have a problem with the rates. Now granted, if, if they see that, you know, maybe that something's not happening to their favor, they, they can appeal to the Public Utility Commission. But for the most part, because you're a voted body, you are their appealed body. Outside city limit customers, you do not have jurisdiction over those rates. And so they're, because they don't vote for you, they appeal to the Public Utility Commission now. Prior to about five years ago, that was over at the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. But here recently, we have seen, been seeing a lot more cases that are coming from outside city limit customers. Appealing their rates as it pertains to these differentials. And so we, we've been involved in some of those cases. And to, to really be able to. If you get into that appeal, then, then you're looking at having to justify your rate differential. In talking to staff, you know, we, we did consider doing cost of service. My guess is that because it's one commercial customer that these rates were negotiated at some point. And so we just, just knowing the kind of the environment right now as it, as it relates to outside city limit rates. We recommended to staff that, that you not adjust those any further to increase that differential further. Without, of course, really going through a study that would really be able to defend what that rate differential is.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that you, that you not, that you, you not increase their rates. Because again, because their appellate jurisdiction is to the PUC. And so if you adjust their rate and they take you to appeal, they only need ten percent. And so they're one customer. And so they could take that appeal to the PUC and the PUC would review that appeal.
I think, James, if I, if I understood you correctly, it's not really with the differential, but bringing them in line with regular commercial customers. Is that right?
I think that's what they're doing now. I was trying to understand. You know, I, to get back to her answer, I think she's absolutely spot on. That makes a lot of sense that, you know, I can't justify this differential. I have no idea why this was here to begin with. And that is exactly the argument we would have to make if we're to keep it that way and they were to appeal to PUC. I, I was really just looking to understand why the typically if I'm going to change rates, it's going to be a universal, I'm going to keep whatever differentials were there. And just raise the, the, the base, if you will. And in this case, we raised the base on everything except for out of city limit. And I was trying to understand why that didn't happen, why the, the, why this consultant decided to get away from our practice of having the differential as the city. And now that she's able to articulate how that could put us in a legal situation in the future. Because she's probably right, this was probably negotiated way back when and all of those players aren't here anymore. And so we're going to have a hard time justifying that. So the proposed, the proposal that they have is the best for the city. And really treats this customer more fairly compared to everybody else. And given that it's so far back, chances are whatever costs were involved in, in providing that service in the first place, whatever that was, has been long since reconciled.
Yeah, I, i- if I recall, that customer is off of Jones Road, south of two ninety. Does anybody know?
That's who I would suspect it is.
Yeah, and I think, I think they, they had, if I recall, they had requested several times to be on city water. And I think Mike Castro facilitated that and it probably was a negotiated rate. I don't remember the exact timeframe, but I remember extending service off of Jones Road South.
Yeah, I think there's another good policy reason to want to keep them happy with staying with the city water. Because since they're outside of city limits, they could probably, they have alternatives, obviously. And I don't, the last thing I would want to do is, although it's, I don't know how much difference it would make. I don't want them deciding, well, we will go, go off city water and we'll drill a water well instead and then start using groundwater, which could contribute to subsidence.
Granted, they have a well already and that's what they're trying to get off, but that was my follow up question.
We should be encouraging.
My follow up was, what are our rates compared to others? I mean, they could switch to City of Houston, the lines right there, it would cost some drilling, but they could make it happen. But in this case, I don't think we need to go any further. She brings up very valid points of why that decision was made.
Right. All very good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
And if there's no more discussion on the topic. I'm looking for a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty dash two zero.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash two zero.
I'll second. That was Bobby Warren, Councilmember Warren with the motion and Councilmember Lawson with the second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any, anyone against? Any abstentions? Motion carried. We will move into our last item, five, discuss and take appropriate action concerning the date, time and place to conduct the October twenty twenty regular meeting of the city council due to the extension of the early voting period for the presidential election. Lori Cootie.
Sorry, somebody muted me. Yes, Mayor, if you will recall back in January, we did change our October nineteen council meeting to October twelve because of the county using our facility for the presidential election. Well, since the governor and has extended the early voting period, we're going to run into some issues with the election workers setting up their equipment. They won't be able to do it after our council meeting. And it could be that in October, we are meeting in person and not via video. So this item is just basically to talk about what council would like to do. We have some suggestions, we could reschedule the meeting from, from October twelve to October five. Or we could just conduct the October twelve meeting in the U shape room. And if we are doing video, permitted to do video in October, we could just say we would do a virtual meeting as opposed to the U shape room. So those are the, the items that we're putting before the council for discussion.
Okay. So the options that she gave for start to move it even a week sooner to October fifth. Or to have it on the twelfth, but in the U shape room. My thoughts are, I, I would like to get back to having in-person meetings as soon as we can and looking at the COVID situation. And we, and everyone can have different feelings on this, but for me, in two months. That, to me, that seems like it's enough time for us to at least have, potentially have an in-person meeting socially distanced. That's my feeling, but I'm not going to force anybody to want to come in for that. So we could still have it remotely like we're having right now. But my personal feeling is I'm trying, I would like to have it, try to get maybe back in person. But the more I'm thinking about this, though, I'm kind of like, let's, maybe we just, maybe we just do it through Zoom anyways. Because of the complications just with the election and space and what, what is every, uh, let me, let me go around the room. Let me, let me ask Bobby, what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, my concern would be with the U shape room. If, if this pandemic is still ongoing, that is a kind of a small room and trying to have a regular meeting in that room would be tricky. My other concern would be that that's awfully close to the, to the September meeting. And I don't know how much would be on the agenda. And then to turn around in November, I don't know when the November regular meeting is scheduled for right now, the sixteenth of November. That would be a long, long period of time. And I know we could have a special session if something really couldn't wait or if something, you know, if we had a lot of stuff build up. But yeah, it's tough because yeah, you, you're kind of, you've got one problem with the fifth and another one with the twelfth. I think the twelfth would probably be fine, but we would, yeah, I would say if, if, if there's still some social distancing requirements. Assuming we can meet virtually, that would be the best thing to do.
Okay. I think you brought up some great points, thinking about it. That's a big gap. I mean, you're going to have September's meeting, the third Monday of September. And you have October fifth, not too far beyond that. And then you have a huge gap between the fifth and whenever our November meeting would be. So yeah, and in the U shape room, if it was just us, we may be able to socially distance. But again, we've got to, of course, got to be open to public. And I don't really want everyone packing in there if there's, happens to be a topic that draws a lot of people. The ability to socially distance in that space, if we were in the bigger room, that'd be a lot easier. But in the U shape room, it's probably just not advisable by any public health standards to do that. Even hopefully by October, we will have less of an issue, but still an issue. So that'll be my recommendation, I think, would be to have it on the twelfth, right? That's what we had it scheduled for, Lori, would be to have it on the twelfth.
Yes, sir.
And let's, let's just opt to do it over Zoom like we're doing now. Does anybody have any other feelings about that or does that sound like it's okay?
Yeah, we're going around the room. I, I agree, I don't, I don't see any change to the status quo. I don't think there's going to be any problem with having a Zoom meeting at that point. I prefer this method as long as it is permitted. And that, I, I agree that changing the meeting dates per, puts the September, October meeting too close together and October, November too far apart. And so if it is going to be in person, it should, it should, the meeting date should stay the same. We could look at the golf course or perhaps contacting one of the churches about a large open room if we need to. If we need to do it in person, let's look at a different venue instead of the U shaped room. But I, I prefer to stay on Zoom as long as it's allowed by the state.
I agree. Gary, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I'm agreeing with you. The main concern is the giving these citizens their right to represent themselves in front of us. And they can't do that in a person-to-person meeting because some of them will have underlying conditions where they can't risk coming in the room.
Agreed.
Oh, the only way you can do it is with the Zoom.
Yep. Greg, you have any thoughts? You're, you're muted, sorry.
No, it, it really doesn't matter to me, but if we're, you know, if we're looking at doing Zoom, do we want to keep it on the nineteenth? Because the facility was going to be occupied on the nineteenth, moved it back to the twelfth. But if we're going to, if we're going to do Zoom, why don't we just keep it back on the nineteenth?
That's a great catch.
Yeah. I, I thought there was another reason besides elections why we moved it to the twelfth, but if it was just elections, I, I think that makes the most sense. Okay.
Was that the reason we moved it in January?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is sort of, I've seen a lot of heads nodding about having the October meeting, moving it back to October nineteenth and having it via Zoom. And if that's what we want to do, then I'm looking for, well, I guess we're not in the most under resolution. I guess that seems like we want to do, I'm seeing nodding heads, so let's go ahead and make that, make that the direction we give to Lori.
I think we need a question.
I, I think we're good. I'm, I'm, I'll make that move.
All right, that moves us into mayor and council comments. I will go ahead and start with Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a few items, I'll try to be quick. School is starting soon, some are going virtually, some are physically. It's been six months since kids have been in school. Let's start to repay attention to school zones again. They, they actually matter and they serve a purpose. So let's start to slow down around neighborhoods and schools and the rest. Real quick, also tonight, we kind of helped codify state regulation. There's a lot of regulations that, that are by the county, the state, the federal government. That, you know, we as a city don't have the opportunity to do anything about, we just kind of have to follow them. So, and I know we, we as city council members kind of take some heat for that. I'm happy to pass people along to Commissioner Kegel, Rosenthal, Senator Biden Court and so on and so forth. But just remember, whether it's beverage regulations or COVID nineteen or other things, we're kind of limited in sometimes in what we can do. And finally, just wanted to point out that we've missed recognizing officers and city workers with Officer of the Month and so on and Worker of the Quarter. And I just wanted to thank, once again, all city workers and welcome our new Parks Director, Robert. Thank you guys for your tireless effort and dedication and hitting curveballs out of the park. Whatever comes at you, you take care of and you make us a shining star that's like on our logo. So thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Greg, you have anything?
I don't, I'd just like to welcome Robert to Jersey Village. I, I hope you enjoy your tenure here and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Uh, Gary?
I want to second that, that great big welcome to Robert. And I want to just say that you're inheriting a very good staff and I hope you take care of them.
Thank you, Gary. James?
I really don't have much, echo a lot of the same comments, welcome Robert and very be careful driving, school them.
Definitely. Bobby?
Wanted also echo the welcome to Robert. I, I think you'll, you'll really enjoy working here in Jersey Village. It is definitely a small town feel in the midst of a big town. But the other thing I wanted to say is, I, I just wanted to thank the Jersey Village Police Department for their professionalism. They have had a heck of a, a time the last few weeks. But I, I would say it, it looks like that due to their outstanding training and professionalism and dedication, they've come out pretty well each of those times. You know, it's, it's, you, you never want to see one of those major incident reports come to your email. But I, I'm very glad that during a few harrowing moments here and there, that they have come out unscathed relatively. And, and that we've, it looks like we've been getting some real bad guys off the street lately. Maybe not in the easiest way, but we're getting them off the street. So I just wanted to thank them and I'm so glad that we've, we've, that we're seeing the additional sales tax revenue that allows us to continue to provide you guys with the equipment and the training and all of the things you need to continue that, that track record.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to say thanks to the city staff and welcome to Robert. And you guys are continuing to do a fantastic job with all the challenges that you're facing. Thanks very much for all the reports that you, you give to us to, to keep us apprised of what's going on. Thanks very much for all the reports that you you give to us to to keep us apprised of what's going on. And I I drove, I just want to say, I drove to Colorado on a road trip with my family this about a week ago just to get out of the heat. And, you know, we had a really great time as a family, and I listened to a ton of podcasts on the on the eighteen hour drive there and the eighteen hour drive back. And one of the podcasts was about civics. Civics one on one is a great podcast. And it's, I highly recommend if anyone is looking for a podcast pickup on civics one on one, it really goes over the basics of the Constitution, basics of of how the how our government was put together. But it also kind of touches on local government and why it's so important for people to step up and serve not only as city council members and mayors, but also on boards and commissions so that they can put their stamp on their own community. So I would encourage everybody to step up. And if you if you see something that you want changed, you can talk to us and see, hey, how do we change this? You know, what what can I do? And we can figure out how to how to plug you into making Jersey Village your actual community that you that we all know and love. So pick that up if you want. And with that, I'll go ahead and during the meeting, everybody have a great rest of the month. We'll see you around in September.